Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We close the morning with the county commission's order. It's, today is Wednesday, May 15th, 10:00 AM Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Secora are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with Renetta McClure, our county administrator. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. We have 13 exonerations for 5,146,04 minutes from May 8th, 2024. Vouchers, General County, 247,940,33. Magistrate Court, $60.65. 911, 278,620,81. Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,076,34. Camp Muffley, 373,60. Mason Dixon Park, 4,005,0110. Mon County Center, 3,003,2395. Recreation Levy, 4,037,50. Payroll, 44,421,11. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 117,913,27. Mon General Tiff, 289,9910. University Town Center Tiff, 1,550,850,30. ARPA, 23,484,99. Parks and Recreation, 32,961,03. Purchasing Card vouchers, General County, 10,593,45. 911, $250. Chestnut Ridge Park, 903,08. Camp Muffley, 331,88. Mason Dixon Park, 131,07. For a voucher total of 2,615,212,56. Budget revisions, there are no budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for May 15th, 2024.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
Still moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an objection to annual accounting in the estate of Dorothy Jean Signe.
Okay, and I understand our, this is, the annual accounting was rejected because the bond, bonding had not been renewed.
Correct.
So a letter was sent to the administrator and the estates is recommending that we give her 30 days to pay the bond or be subject to petition for removal. So what is the will?
Move to give 30 more days for the bond.
There's a motion and I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we have one other fiduciary item that, Ms. Hall, you want to give us an update?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I wasn't actually going to be on the agenda.
It's quite early.
That's all right.
I wanted to keep you all apprised of the progress. When I was last here, we had submitted a proposal to the heir that filed the objection, and she wanted to circulate it amongst her siblings to see that she, they told me that they thought that it was agreeable, but she wanted to get the, the okay from her siblings.
Okay, and for the record, would you mention the estate and your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Marjorie Langdon, and Leslie Ross is the, the heir that filed the, the objection.
Okay.
And, and so I was waiting and waiting, and I kept looking, and apparently somehow it ended up in a spam folder that didn't come up whenever I would do a search on my email, but I found it, and I've since responded, and they suggested that we, we would prepare an amended annual accounting to reflect the changes that, that we are proposing, which I didn't object to that. So we submitted a copy to them, and I got back last night, pretty late last night, their response, they had some questions and some suggestions that I don't really think comports with what the law is. I don't know that if they, if they had received a copy, but one of the things that the clerk had asked us to do was file an amended accounting as well, or amended appraisal, excuse me, because we had listed some of the assets on the annual accounting to try to maybe avoid that cost to the estate, but the clerk's like, no. So I took those assets that I had listed on the annual accounting that are now on the amended appraisal and took them out of the receipts portion of the receipts dispersment and distribution, and they had a question about that. But I don't want to confuse, there are other heirs that have not objected. I don't want to leave those assets on there because one of them was the, the cash that was actually owned by Mrs. Langdon at the time of her death, and I don't want those heirs to think that there's more money than there actually was.
Right.
And so I submitted my, in a very lengthy email to them, my, my concerns about, you know, about that, about duplicating assets. They need to be listed one time and one time only, and I have not heard back from them. And the deadline's actually the 22nd, and I don't know that we can meet that deadline, but we're, it's basically, they agreed to our proposal, he just disagrees on how it needs to be recorded on the annual accounting. So I'm asking for some more time. I believe we should be able to resolve this.
Could, would 30 days be?
You mean to add on another 30 days from the 22nd?
Yes, that'll be fine. I don't even think we'll need that long, but I don't know when they can get to, because the, the last thing, of course, they need to do is they need to submit a letter withdrawing their objection, and they're, they're in it working.
Move to amend to up to 30 more days.
Okay, so you-
30 days from the 22nd.
From the 22nd.
Okay, so-
Thank you very much.
To clarify, you're, you're making a motion to, to extend the deadline on the Langdon estate?
Yes.
30 days from the 22nd.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I'll second that. It's the will of the commission that just, you know, we just want to see this moving, and you've been showing good faith effort to keep this moving, so, you know, as long as that keeps occurring, then, you know, we're fine. I know that these are tough issues to really ferret out, and so we appreciate you coming and updating us, and we'll notify the estate's office that, that deadline has been extended 30 days from the 22nd. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming.
As always, good seeing you. Any other fiduciary items?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes?
Well, we've got several. We have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lifeguards that are seasonal part-time for Camp Muffley. Olivia Urs, Ian Gillespie, Tessa Meadows- Skyland Signs, Brooke Meadows, Gabriel Schaefer, Cameron Smith. These, all of these start today, and they're all paid $11 per hour, no benefits.
Move to approve.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we also have, Chrissy, are you, Chrissy? Okay, you can come up. Do you have, you have the letter with you that you sent?
I do. Oh, I don't actually.
Okay.
Thanks. Sure. I'm Chrissy Cobb, I'm the executive director of House of Fair Kids, and we would like to hire Skylar Hilton as a full-time volunteer supervisor, full benefits starting at 35.5, with the effective first date being May 16th, if you should approve.
Move for approval with a question?
Okay, second?
This isn't a new position, is it?
No, this is not a new position.
Then I have no problem.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the county.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other person?
Yeah, I received one from the circuit clerk this morning. Couple of weeks ago, you guys approved a part-time, a part-time employee for her office. That employee has since decided against taking the position, so Ms. Hydock submitted a new, a new part-time name, Olivia, I'm going to mess up this last name, it's Rapachietta, maybe? It's R-A-P-A-C-C-H-I-E-T-T-A. And she would be starting May 20th, 1350 per hour. This will be part-time, no benefits.
Move for approval.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 That is all.
No U Services center?
No.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, raise their hand, come forward, provide their name and address, and be heard. Come on. Good morning.
My name is Dani Ludwig, I live at 326 Broadway Avenue. So usually when I come to these kind of things, I have a posse of people with me, but unfortunately, people have jobs that, like, they can't come to this meeting, and I'm grateful that I do have a job where I can make time to do this. So I'm sure, as you both know, that we go to city council, every city council meeting, pushing for action to help with the unsheltered population. So now I'm here, coming to you guys, because we're like, we're literally getting nowhere, and the problem's going to get worse. And I know that, like, people are trying to do things, like Danielle is always trying to do things, I'm always trying to do things, I'm meeting with other, like, people in the community, but like, I need, I need your help. Like, I don't know what to do. I, I need solutions, and I'm not getting anywhere with solutions that I come up with. So like, people that I care about are dying, like, the last city council meeting, we read 39 names of people that have passed away on the streets because they're unsheltered. And I know that, like, most people have issues, whether it be mental health, substance abuse, trauma, PTSD, like, but not everybody is choosing to be outside. So like, our model is housing first, because if you house someone first, then you give them the opportunity to do whatever they need for their mental health and their substance abuse, or whatever, you know, that they need help with. In a lot of cases, it's people want to get clean, but if they go to treatment, they have to come back out to the street doing the same thing around the same people, and they're going to end up relapsing. Like, that's not, that's not an idea for someone either, and I'm someone in long-term recovery, and I've been homeless. Like, but somebody helped me along the way, and now I'm trying to get back and do the same thing. I've been doing this for six years. I've been fighting this battle this whole time, and when Bartlett shuts down, we're going to have more people on the street. Like, and I understand that this is not just a city issue, it's not just a county issue, it's a worldwide issue, but like, here in, in Mon County, like, we, we are supposed to protect people that live in our, in our, in our county, in our community, and we're not. Like, I, I wish I had answers, but I don't, so like, I'm coming to you asking for help. I'm coming to you to sit down at a table and discuss this and come up with solutions, because that's what we need to do. We need to work together, collaborate as a team, and figure it out, because I'm like, smacking brick walls, and I got quite a headache at this point, you know? So like, please, I'm asking, just to have a conversation with me, like, come up with solutions, and let's get a game plan, because, I, I mean, before you know it, it's going to be winter time, and I don't want to see people freeze to death. I mean, we fight that all the time. But please, I need, I need help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Got any, should we raise hands?
Good morning again, two weeks in a row, how exciting for everyone, right? Danielle Trumbull, 1141 Charles Avenue. I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments that I made last week. I was grateful that each of you chose to respond to those during your report. It's great that we have a willingness that everyone will come to the table and have discussions about this, because certainly, the community is requesting that of us, their elected officials. Just as an update to not only you all, because I think you, you guys were on the email, but to the public, since I was here last week, the assistant city manager did work on an RFP for an emergency winter shelter. Admittedly, I have, I have some changes that I would like to see made to that, and I have not sent those to her yet, it's been a busy week, but I have been looking it over, I hope that you all are, are doing that as well, because I want to reiterate, and I want to stress my opinion, that this should be a joint venture, this should be a joint effort, it should be joint funding, and I'm not just talking between the city of Morgantown and the Mon County Commission, I am talking about with every municipality within our community. I have not been to any of their meetings, turns out, most of them meet on Tuesday at the same time that we meet, but I am going to figure it out, and I will be there. So, back to the comments that you all made at the end of the meeting last week, I understand the concerns that have been expressed, and the desire for more information, and I'm especially grateful that Mon County does choose to support many of our nonprofit organizations through funding, but in addition to funding, what we really need is action, and I would love to say that this is the time when we should be proactive, but we can't really even say that, because we're already late to the party, I think. Commissioner Secora said, when you're ready, we're ready, let's have a conversation. I'm ready. Let's set up a meeting, even if it's a very informal, one-on-one conversation, I am happy and ready and willing to have those conversations. I also just want to say that since I was here last week, and since the last city council meeting, a lot of people have reached out, other elected officials, other candidates for office, a lot of community members, and I am setting up meetings, I am happy to meet with anyone who has ideas, or even just a willingness to, to help find solutions to some of the issues that we are having. Through MCR, we are talking with other nonprofits who could potentially be running shelters, we are talking about lockers and where those would go. We are having the conversations, please come to the table. Anyone else who has ideas, you can reach me, 304-601-1480, that's my personal cellphone number, I am much better with a text than with a call, or dtrumbel@morgantownwv.gov. By all means, let's talk.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Can I say none? Go ahead and go ahead and go ahead. Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Coon, our commission office manager, good morning.
Good morning. I have several requests for reimbursements. The first one is for the governor's highway safety program, save communities in the amount Impaired driving, $3,545. Distracted driving, $259.80. Then I also have requests for reimbursements for the Saki Purpose Area 1 grant in the amount of $14,127.14. And the Saki Purpose Area 3 grant in the amount of $13,433.21.
Motion to approve?
Still moved.
All right, I will second that, and just for clarity, there was a couple of questions I had forwarded to Colleen on a couple of the requisitions, and you're, you're getting some additional information, but we can go ahead and proceed with approving those. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
Got two letters of support that were signed and sent on to the requesting organization. The first is for First Energy, and this is a grant program through the Department of Energy, reconductoring to increase the capacity and reliability of utility transmission and distribution lines. It's part of their GRIP program, Grid Resilience and Innovation Partnerships Program. So that was sent on to them last week, and then this morning, I sent on one to Mylan Park Foundation, they've requested a lot of support, they're sending another application to the abandoned mine land grant program, and that's for Phase 2 of the Mylan Park KOA Resort and Campground.
Commissioner Bloom, did you have any correspondence?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, we have none. New business, to consider for approval and appointment to the Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency?
The last position on the board was for a fire chief or their designee. We've got an application from Jason Todd, who is a firefighter with the Clinton District Volunteer Fire Department, that is willing to serve.
Do we have a motion to-
Still moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you. Aye.
Consideration of a contingent fee contract with Fitzsimmons Law Firm, PLLC, to represent the Montague County Commission with the investigation and prosecution of claims against pharmacy benefit managers and their affiliate companies concerning their role in the epidemic, the opioid epidemic.
Move, move to approve.
Second?
Similar agreement that we had on the original opioid settlement, opioid litigation. This is the same thing that they're asking for their previous clients to join into this, this litigation as well.
And the agreement is there's no expense to the county, it's a 25% contingency fee agreement.
Right.
So whatever they, whatever they get on behalf of the county, then they would get their fees off of that. Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration to approve the proposed web services sales agreement with the revised for website design and support. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second, this is a continuation of our existing agreement with revise, it would be support for our website content management system. It locks the pricing in for five years, and includes a redesign, tech support, any CMS updates, and any other of the technical things that go with web hosting. So, do I, we have a motion to, a motion to approve, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration of requisition number 90 for the UTC Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Still moved.
Second?
Position is for $997,289.85.
Okay, and this is the, that amount is less than $100,000 in a statutory lien, and the tax administration fee of 1%. We've got one more month left for the current year's collections, and we're still trickling a little bit over last year, so we're about 2% increase over last year. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And consideration to appoint an individual to represent the county commission on the project review committee of the Region 4 Local Governance Opioid Settlement Board.
I move to appoint Dr. Richard Baglianti.
Okay, I'll second that, any discussion?
Just that he was one of the individuals before that applied, he has an excellent resume, is excited to be working with the group, and I talked with him, and he is very interested in doing it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any other new business?
Yeah.
Okay, reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Okay, reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Okay. Couple things, we had an election last night, and I want to thank all those people who voted, but I, but I have to say that I'm really concerned about the apathy when you only have 17% of the individuals voting, especially on four major issues. There were selection of judges, magistrates, the school bond, and four levies, and when only 17% vote, and you get a 50 or 60% approval, you're talking about 9 or 10% of the entire voting population making a decision on what a major decision for, whether it's Star City, whether it's Mon County, or the city of Morgantown, and it concerns me that we don't have larger turnout. So I do hope that we have the presidential election coming in November, and hopefully we will have a larger turnout there. Um, let's see. There's probably no one more passionate than Danny Ludwig that I've worked with. There's no doubt about it, Danny, and I know you've tried, and you want something done. As you know, I was involved years ago, even with city council, when Dr. Sonenberg set up different committees, we set up different programs, and the committees and the programs went horizontally, yes, and nothing got done. And it is very frustrating. It's also frustrating that, as a county commissioner, people want us to come up with answers and solutions, but we're not a social agency. What we are, we try and help fund those specific ideas and concepts, and I'm a little worried that, and you can see that the nonprofits, for whatever reason, are not coming forward to take the lead. We have everything from West Virginia Coalition and Homelessness, to different groups, you know, to, like, you know, I mentioned before, 24 different groups that we fund, and we offer programs to, but we're, we're not getting anywhere. And I'm not sure, and, and Sean said that, you know, we'd be more than willing to participate, but I've been participating for 10 years, and we're going in circles, and I'm not sure what the answer is or how to do it. And one of the problems, and I'm just going to be upfront, when Rachel Cohen, Danielle and myself worked on the homes for the holidays, we had one group that was really, really integral part of it, that made the difference, and that was the landlords. They offered facilities for these individuals to go into housing first. For whatever reason, I'm not going to get into it, but when we had the encampment, it became polarized, for whatever reason. And because of that, I know Danielle and I have reached out to different landlords, and it is very difficult that, when I talk to them, I'm amazed, they will say they would rather leave their apartment unfilled than to offer services. And I don't know what we can do to help out on that, because there's a lot of destruction, there was a lot of problems, that there was no wraparound programs, which to me, if you put the person in, you have to have a wraparound program. Now, I will tell you, I met with Cassidy Alexander yesterday, and she had an idea, which I really think, because it's good, one of the problems is, to get people in the West Virginia sober, you need $1,000. And that was something I said, well, you know, we have funds available through the opioid program that maybe you want to apply for, and that is a small solution, but I think we need some small wins. And to come up and say, you know, I love the RFP, I think that's a great idea, what worries me though, and I, I can't answer it, and I don't know why, for whatever reason, not one person used the warming shelter last year, Richard, and it wasn't open. We had the, the additional warming shelter, I should say, that was used by the sober center, okay, and that really worried me, because you have 80 to 100 people, it wasn't being used for whatever reason, and we need to find out why that is. But, you know, I know Sean, Jeff and I want, want to help, we want to be a part of it, I, I just don't, I don't know. If I did, we'd be making a lot of money and coming up with solutions, but I appreciate you, Danny, continually to keep this issue on the forefront, and we need to come up with some sort of solutions. And I do appreciate finally bringing in the other cities, which I think is key, that we need. So with that, it really isn't an answer, it's more of a concern, and we got to keep looking forward for solutions.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, I had a MAP Executive Committee meeting, and then after that, I had a development authority meeting. On Friday, we had Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board of Directors meeting, staff reports, and a broadband tag-up. On Saturday, we did our monthly breakfast with Delegate Statler, BOE President Ron Lidle, and Frank DeVano. We've got off schedule with the legislative session this year, so that was our first breakfast in a couple of months. Obviously, this weekend was Mother's Day weekend, I hope everybody, all the mothers were honored appropriately and got a chance to relax. As obviously everybody knows, yesterday was Election Day. Today's a normal day, though 10:45, we're going out for a replaying for National Police Week, and then this afternoon, I have the Morgantown Area Partnership Board meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow, we're meeting with, I'm meeting with the city manager and Russ Rogerson of MAP, and then after that, I'll be going to the MMPO meeting. Friday, we have staff reports and a broadband tag-up. Next Monday, we'll do election canvassing, and we'll, I know that there's a couple of close races, that maybe they'll change, but there is, there's good news and bad news that came out of the election. I'll kind of go over the bad news first. Obviously, we know that the, the school board bond issue failed, predictably failed, but I know my close personal friend, Ron Lidle, president of the board, worked tirelessly on that, he put himself out there, and as elected officials, he did what, what you guys asked him to do. You elect him to make decisions, he advocated for something, it failed, and with that, his reelection to the board failed. But there are some big shoes to fill. With 12 years, Ronnie will step down as of June 30th, Nancy Walker will be stepping down as of, you know, she has, she's pushing three decades of support, of service. down as of, you know, she has, she's pushing three decades of support, of service to the Board of Education, and our school system is the best in, in the state, because of the efforts of people like Ron and Nancy, so we're going to miss them. There's big shoes to fill, but I'm confident that the people that will be coming on to the Board, as well as the remaining Board members, who are all pretty junior, except for Mike Kelly, will, will pick up the slack and continue to move our school system forward. I speak, I speak of Ron because I know him personally. I would not be sitting in this seat if it wasn't for Ron pushing me to do my part to serve this community, and Ron has done that tirelessly. He, the support he does to the Board of Education is exponentially smaller than the overall support that he's constantly doing to support the citizens of this community. He's given his time, talent, and treasure for years, a lot of personal sacrifice, and a lot of business sacrifice to serve his citizens, not because he wants people to thank him, or, hey, look at me, it's because it's the way it should be done. And I applaud him for his service, and we'll miss him and Nancy. The good news is, this community had a really healthy discussion about the status of our school system, and we are the best in the state, and, but we shouldn't sit back and just rest on our laurels, and assume that we don't need to keep pushing the limit. So, through this whole bond issue, there was a real robust discussion about how we can make the best system in the state even better. So, you know, something good comes out of everything, and I think it was a good discussion. You pretty much had everybody on both sides of the issue saying, we need to do something. So, that's always a positive, and I hope that they'll take that forward, the Board, the Superintendent and his staff, I hope they'll take that forward and figure out what that, what that is, and push it forward. And, you know, the system works, this is the way it's supposed to work. We're elected to make decisions, we don't have a monopoly on these seats, this is, these are the seats of the citizens. They elect us to make decisions out of these seats, and we have our evaluation every Election Day. So, that's the way the system's supposed to work, and it is disappointing that we don't have turnout. I think there's, you know, a lot of apathy sets in that we, just, just like I was talking about with the school system, you know, shouldn't rest on your laurels and just assume, well, everything's fine, no, you need to get engaged, and we need to keep pushing the limit. So, hopefully with the general election, we'll have more, more participation. Dani, Danielle, I appreciate your, your passion. I do think that we can have a, a part of a solution, but as Tom said, we're not a social agency, we're not supposed to figure out how to do it, we're supposed to work with partners that can figure it out, and, and support them in doing so. So that's the important distinction, is, you know, we can be part of the solution, but we can't be the solution, and the city can't be the solution. We have to work with our, within our community to figure out what that solution is, and then, and then give them the tools to, to help deal with this, deal with the situations that affect our citizens. So we're always, we're willing to be there and talk through any issues, but we want to, we want to be part of solution, and not part of, you know, anything other than that. So, having said that, Tom, do you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.